Somebody's gonna have to help me with this. All right, help me through this. You know, if I get here early, we could actually go through this.
Anthony being one of the seven commissioners acted in an advisory capacity to the city council on community issues having a direct or indirect effect on youth and whereas Anthony contributed to the organization and implementation of the Youth and Government Program and whereas Anthony collaborated with his fellow youth commissioners to nominate and recognize outstanding students with the Teen Spotlight Commendation and whereas Anthony kept informed about the progress and development of community teen activities and programs including social service events. Now therefore, the City of Lancaster commends Anthony Barrows to start. Cameron Epsley from Parent Fleet High School. Joshua K. from Desert Christian. Luis Harrow from Eastside High School. Casey Pickett from Lancaster Baptist.
Mr. Stath there this morning.
Rihanna Rodeo from Lancaster High School. And Tristan Wilkins from Bethel.
Okay, let me get in the middle and we're gonna picture, okay? One, two, rose?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Does the three make you want to smile? Thank you. Okay, so who's gonna help me with the parent university? What's that? Okay, why don't you explain it first? Explain what the program is and then I'll read the names and we'll give out the commendations, okay?
Well, the parents on the field trip and they haven't arrived yet, so that's-
So they're not here?
Yes, so they're on the way, they're right outside.
Oh, so, okay, so why don't we-
I'll go first and then I'm finished.
When they get here, why don't you let me know and I'll just interrupt, we'll do it that way.
Perfect.
You're just gonna have to wait. Did you take my stuff? How quickly I fuse others. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendars consist of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the authority or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items, on the agenda, and non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Anything to be removed? CC three for me.
Ashley, we'd like to move CC three to the next regularly scheduled council meeting on the 26th and we apologize for the inconvenience.
Somebody give me a pen, please. Okay, with the exception of CC three, do we have any speaker cards? We wanna do the housing authority first, okay. Kitty, it's all yours.
We do not have any speaker cards for the housing authority minutes, so do we have a motion and a second for the adoption?
I'll move we adopt-
Hold on, I think you wanna pull three. Or is that on my agenda? Don't listen to me.
Okay, motion and a second?
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. All right, passes. I will turn the meeting over back to Mayor Chairman Paris.
Thank you. Okay, now with the council consent calendar, we'll remove item three. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards on the consent calendar or the minutes.
Okay, let's start with the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Second.
Let's vote. Michael Weavis.
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. There's many CCs I wanna speak on tonight. The first one I wanna speak on is CC four. It's the monthly report of investments as reported. And yesterday I had occasion to listen to the Chairman of the Federal Reserve, Ben Bernanke, and he stated that they're requiring the banks to have more funds to back up their business, which led me to look at our investment portfolio and I noticed that our funds are overwhelmingly invested to the point of $28 million in US bank. The percentage rate of return on some of our CDs and investments goes from zero to 1.35. Most of our investments are federal government securities. My concern is if we have a economic collapse, are our funds gonna be insured? As you well know, FDIC insured rate is $200,000. That's something to think about. The other thing I wanna speak about are these multiple assessments by different districts. We have CC eight, the Drainage Maintenance District Annual Assessment. We have assessment for the Lighting Maintenance District Annual Assessment. We have an assessment for the Landscape Maintenance District Annual Assessment. I calculated each one of the increases for each of these districts and it does come to 2%, which is the inflation rate, so that's good. The bad thing about this is, in my opinion, these are tax increases, let's face it. And at this point when the citizens are burdened with taxes, and I know we all got our sanitation notice yesterday, that we're gonna get increased on that, so all around, we're getting tax increases. We don't know how Sacramento's gonna do. Now that the majority party can pass a budget with majority, we may get more taxes for- well, they can't raise the taxes, but they can do havoc. So my concern is, I would propose that instead of increasing these assessment districts 2% that we hold off for a year and wait till the economy improves before we increase the tax burden on the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt that consent calendar is currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Okay, public hearing item number one. Mr. Bozignian.
Thank you, Mayor Paris, Authority members, and council members. This is the fifth budget that Barbara and I will have presented to you. We will go over the details. I know this is gonna be old news for the mayor and the council as you've gone through and reviewed documents and we've had meetings and such. It's really a public presentation that starts it off. The budget, I will go over the purpose, the current conditions, the response, and a high-level look at the priorities. Barbara will go over the financial summary and the budget highlights and then we'll conclude. I would start out by saying that the same overarching goals and the primary directives are the same: financial stability and service to the public. That is why we exist. Let me put it in context first. This budget is reflective of council priorities and direction throughout the year. A budget is not developed at one meeting, nor is it developed at a council meeting just only. It's developed by a council who gets- who is in touch with the community and an engaged council, and that's what we have. The presentation tonight, quite frankly, budgets don't lend themselves well to presentations. That is why, for those citizens that are interested, we always put in there our phone numbers, email. A lot of citizens have our cell phones, and we invite people to come down in the next couple of weeks, meet with us. We'll go over anything they want. I know some of the folks here have taken us up on that to explain the budget. It helps us as well too, and it will be on the web for people to look at before the council considers it on the 26th. And we, as a city, always take pride in the fact that we have been able to present and adopt a budget prior to the beginning of a fiscal year, something that Sacramento ought to try once. And I mean that sincerely because it puts a lot of burden on a lot of other entities that don't know what their budgets are gonna be until the state passes its budget. What is the purpose of a budget? A budget is not an end unto itself. It's a financial guide and a plan, and the purpose is what it allows us to do. So the purpose of this budget is the services, particularly public safety, the events, the project, the maintenance, the hours of operation that the public will benefit throughout the next fiscal year. So our budget development, what we do is we develop it based on services first and then match available staffing and resources to deliver those services. As we've said in the past, local government isn't a math problem where you just cut services, staffing, resources till you get to a number and then you're done. You have to start with the most important services and then balance those with revenues. Let's talk about our current conditions, where we're at. Number one, we believe that the worst of the economic downturn is over, and we're not just saying that. If you look in the budget document, you'll see various studies, analyses, and such, and independent review that will show where we're at. We know that our property values have flattened. They didn't go up nor down this year, which is different than the prior two years when they went down 20-some percent, and sales taxes up, in particular auto sales. And, most importantly, we are now existing with a reduced staffing level, we're operating at greater efficiencies, and most importantly in that is we have partnerships in place with the community that allows us to provide the same services with less resources. I'm saddened to report that the biggest danger by far that our city faces is our own government, and I mean all levels of our own government. At the federal level, we're being hit with HUD and DOJ investigations and such, which are very time-consuming, they're baseless, and they cost our community a lot of money. That hurts. The state, the state has killed redevelopment, as we well know. They've abdicated their responsibility towards public safety by essentially allowing a lot of criminals to be on the streets, which overburdens the county. And the inability to get the budget under control plays havoc with local communities, and I'm not just talking cities. You can talk to any of the school districts now what they're going through, trying to figure out their budget and what's gonna happen to them. That's a big danger to us. And the county, with the notable exception of Supervisor Antonovich, their complete lack of administration of the Section Eight program and tying the Sheriff's Department's hands. So we face a lot of risks imposed upon us by other levels of government that we have to overcome. We also, other conditions, we have increased public safety costs, we have deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed, and we have new facilities that we need to staff and program, most notably the museum, American Heroes Park. How have we responded and how are we going to respond? Well, as I mentioned before, we have a smaller staff. We reduced staffing and staffing costs by 24 people over the last year. This time last year, we had 24 more people, and we're down 86 in the last four years. We've had hiring freezes and cost freezes. We've looked at efficiencies everywhere, from cell phones to travel to, instead of paying people to take old stuff, selling old stuff on the internet, but we've looked at all ways to try to make it. One of the biggest things, and I give council complete credit for this, is the partnerships that have been developed in the communities. We talk in the abstract sometimes about neighborhood impact homes and wellness homes, but look at what that is. Those are 16 facilities in neighborhoods that all the city did, and I shouldn't say all, but what the city did was facilitate and provide the homes. There are literally hundreds of church members, nonprofit members, and medical community members that volunteer to provide services to our neighborhoods. That's how we've gotten to where we're at, and that's how we've been able to address it. We have pursued new revenue sources, alternative energy being chief among them, our deal with the schools. We've taken over services to keep money local that was going out of the area and provide a better service. The sewer district is an example of that, our local sewer district. We've looked at opportunities, and this council, more than any group of people I've worked with, has looked at opportunities when everyone looked at that the world is falling. We've expanded things. We went out and built things in a bad time because it's 30% cheaper to build the things we knew we were gonna need, and that took a lot of foresight. We have a very good staff, a motivated staff, and we have a staff that wants to help this community. But the most important, I said, is we have an engaged and proud community that, with the council's leadership and with good work by staff and the community leaders, have all stepped up to get us where we're at. That's how we're doing what we do with less resources. What are our budget priorities before I turn it over to Barbara? Our budget priorities, first and foremost, is financial stability. Nothing happens without financial stability. Public safety is always the number one priority. Maintaining service levels and hours of operation is critical. Partnering with the community to maintain our events, those are critical. They're not just for fun. When you go, I challenge anyone, when you go down on Thursday nights to a farmer's market, whether you like the Boulevard or not, and believe me, most people, the vast majority like the Boulevard, look at the sense of community that you see there. That's what's important. That happens because we have community partners that stepped up. Example here is Toyota. Their Toyota concert series. Because of that, there's music there. That's a business that stepped up so that we can have those events that are important to the community. We talked about pursuing new business ventures. I wanna make certain, economic development is still a priority for this community. Just because the state took away redevelopment doesn't mean we don't need jobs, retail. We need them more than ever, but we're looking at this as an opportunity to focus our economic development efforts and not be shackled by some of the things we had to do for redevelopment. We can focus on what needs to be done with this community. I talked about this budget will program and operate new facilities, Moa, and it begins to address deferred maintenance, both by investment and over the next several months. Robert and his staff are doing an excellent job of looking at different ways to maintain roads and facilities that we can get more out of the dollars we have. So that's sort of the overview of the budget. I'm gonna turn it over to Barbara to go over some of the numbers and highlights, and then we're available for any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and authority members. It's my pleasure again to present to you our proposed budget for the next fiscal year, 2012-13, if you can believe that. As the city manager mentioned, it does appear that we believe that we've seen the bottom of the economic downturn. We're projecting sales tax to be up 9% from the current fiscal year, property tax-related revenues to be up 2% from this year. But we still have a long way to go to get back to where we were. To give you some perspective, our sales tax revenues, while we're projecting them to be up 9%, they're still down 6% from the peak. Property tax revenues are down 27% from where they were in '07-'08. Now, those are based on our assessed valuation. So how long do you think it's gonna take each of us to see a 27% gain in the value of our property? That's how long it's gonna take the city to get back where they were on property tax-related revenues. It's gonna be quite some time. We project general fund reserves to be at approximately $7 million, or 16% of our budget. That's down from five years ago. But we should be really proud of the fact that when we started the economic downturn, actually before we started, we had the foresight to put money away. We didn't budget to the maximum amount of revenue stream that we had. We knew at some point the economy's gonna turn down and we're gonna need some money set aside to help get us through, and we did just that. As we, as things improve, we have to keep in mind that it's gonna be important to replenish those reserves because, again, eight, nine years down the road, we're gonna see another downturn. We're gonna want that nest egg. We're gonna want to have the ability to have that money there so that we can make strategic changes in the budget that gives us some time so that we're not making knee-jerk reaction and having to lay off people or cut services, you know, at a short notice. Our budget, as the city manager mentioned, our budget does absorb the economic development function as well as the housing functions that were previously funded through the redevelopment agency. Our proposed budget for all funds, general fund and other special revenue funds, is proposed at $110 million. That's down 18% from the '11-'12 adjusted budget. The change is primarily due to the changes, funding changes in economic development and housing. We have, on the general fund side, we're proposing expenditures at nearly $56 million. That's almost exactly the same amount as we had in '11-'12. We are proposing that we balance the budget with $100,000 allocation from reserves, but essentially that is a balanced budget. The dissolution of redevelopment did not just impact the redevelopment agency. It impacted the general fund and the citizens as a whole. Our city lost $50 million of gross tax increment. The general fund lost a direct revenue of $500,000, and with the stroke of a pen, the state eliminated $75 million of debt that was owed to the city by the redevelopment agency. Included in the budget is our capital improvement program, which is, we have proposed $18 million in new funds. None of that money comes from the general fund. It's all special revenue funds or funds that are specific for the project that they're proposed for. The program addresses road maintenance needs, bikeways and trail improvements per the master plan, and various road improvements. We typically take a long-term view of our revenues and expenditures in proposing our budget. We've done that as well with this budget, and we know that current revenue streams will not be sufficient to cover desired service levels into the future. We need to identify new revenue sources in order to meet those needs. I had someone recently ask me when I thought we'd get back to normal, and my thought was, our normal in the future is not gonna be what was normal just a few short years ago. We're not gonna be able to just rely on construction. We're gonna have to look for new revenue streams. We're gonna have to continue to be innovative to bring new sources here. We also need to continue to look for partnerships for activities and events. This budget does not propose any new fees. We don't, have not proposed any new fee increases either. The next step is to bring the budget back to you for adoption at the next meeting on June the 26th, and that does conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Where did you get that picture of that bike path? Because I guarantee you, that was not a Lancaster picture.
Well, I would have to defer to my, to Nicole.
I was riding the bike paths yesterday. It was the scariest experience I have ever had. We have got to do something about that.
I think you're gonna be happy in this budget. We've made a big down payment on the master plan of trails and bikeways. We're also experimenting with new safety alternatives, both colored pavement and raised medians between travel lanes and such, and you're gonna see-
No, in LA, it faded. I was looking at it last week in LA, the green that they painted in Long Beach. It's gone already.
That's one of the reasons we had in one of our contracts to do that. It was exceedingly expensive and it didn't wear well. So we have an experiment going at some other location. I'm not exactly sure where, Robert, to see a different color, a different technique.
Yes, sir, right here on Lancaster Boulevard.
Yes, sir, right here on Lancaster Boulevard, 10th Street West, we did a little green paint. What we're really looking for is to avoid that situation that happened in the city of LA and Long Beach with a coating kind of application. We want to see how it holds up so that we can apply more of it.
Okay, good. I would like to conclude before the questions, first off, thanking Mayor Paris and the council for your leadership of the community. We don't say that lightly. We have, as a community, been able to weather the last five years and flourish because everyone's worked together, and that hasn't always happened. I'd also like to thank all the staff for their work on the budget, and I'd particularly like to thank Barbara Boswell, Nicole Rizzo, and Trevor Barben, or Trevren Barber, excuse me, from our finance department. I can't imagine a city that's better served by their finance department than this one. And as I said, we're happy to answer questions. We expect to get questions from the public. We've talked to the press. We, I know we have some interested folks here, and we're happy to talk about it ad nauseam over the next couple of weeks with anyone. With that, we're...
Thank you.
Any questions?
I do. Let's talk about the process a little bit. We, this is not the first, second, or third time I've seen this actual budget. We go through it, we take a look at it, you do it with each council person, and we make different projects that we want, and that's what takes place on all of it. When I was looking at it, there's an additional $700,000 for the roundabout. Is that correct?
That is correct. The roundabout you're talking about on 10th and Lancaster Boulevard requires an additional $700,000, which is in the budget, proposed in the budget.
Okay. What is the process if we just, if I want to bring that up and remove the roundabout?
Well, there's, there's a, you would discuss it with, you would discuss it obviously with the council. I would, I would say that as a staff, and I know as a council too, because you guys believe, you believe in the safety of roundabouts, if the question is about the dollars on this roundabout, you would be discussing it with the council, and if it's the council's direction to remove that and/or use money in other locations, we can do that, or we could go for grants on it, whatever you decided.
I think we want to kill the roundabout, is that right?
Yes.
Let's, let's kill the roundabout. Put it on the agenda, do whatever you have to do. All right.
Okay, we will do it as part of the next budget and, on the 26th. We'll do it as part of the budget based on direction from council.
I'd like to, I'd like to say one, one thing. I would, would hope that, I know that when we did the downtown, we used redevelopment monies, and we stopped just short within that last block, and I would hope that we'd find some creative ways potentially to take some of the grant money that potentially we were, we had received for the roundabout. I would hope that staff could be creative and see if we can potentially try to figure out a way to, to finish that last half of the block.
What we can do is we can come back with a recommendation for you, if you were to delete the roundabout, how we could accomplish that and other goals in the city with the funds that would be freed up.
In deleting it, I don't want to change the ability to put it in at some future date.
Correct.
Right.
I agree with that.
Okay. All right, understood. Anything else?
I just want to make sure that that, again, if we could, that, it was $900,000 or $940, I can't remember exactly.
$895.
Eight, okay, $895 from grant money, and I would hope that somehow we could be creative and see through that, that those monies, so we're not taking in monies from the general fund or taking any kind of reserve money. I'd like to see us just finish that intersection out from a standpoint of where they stop short. If you drive that first 500 feet...
Does that work?
We will make contact with the grant agency, the MTA, over the next couple of weeks and see the ability to transfer that to a like project that's still potentially. That is going to be a stretch for them, so we're going to have to work that.
Ooh, maybe they could put it in bike paths.
There you go.
Probably not, huh? Okay.
I, I do want to say what a wonderful job that you guys have done on the budget as far as, you know, over the years, and what a difficult position that the city has been in, and how you've made sure there's been no layoffs, how you've protected the employees, how you've protected the city of Lancaster, and what a great job the entire staff has done, you know, for that, and, you know, I commend you for that.
Well, I get to stand up here, but we have the best staff anyone could work with, so it's the creativity of everyone on this staff, and I really mean that.
Claire.
And you're speaking so much better in front of people. That's right. That's what it is.
I won't say it. I learned.
I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to her.
That's why he said he wasn't going to speak right now.
You've got some work to do.
What's, what's the line from Jack Nicholson in "All I Know," "Don't I Feel Like a Horse's Ass?"
Okay. We don't have to do anything on that, right?
We'll bring it back for, sorry. Michael Reeves?
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Our country is in debt for $15 trillion. Our state is in debt for 16 billion, and, and our city manager says things are looking up. I don't think things are looking up. When you hear the Federal Reserve Chairman speak about possible consequences of tax cuts, what's going to happen if they're not renewed, and having to prop up the banks, I don't think things are very good. Instead of having the citizens call the staff and ask questions, I suggest that next week, city manager, have the department heads sit where you're sitting. Have the citizens ask the department heads about this budget directly, and go over the budget line by line, item by item. We can discuss the roundabout, we can discuss everything. It's time to get down to the nitty-gritty. This country is about ready to collapse, and here we are being optimistic and talking about, wow, we're partnering with people, and we're doing this, and, and this might happen. No, we have to take face the reality that we may be facing a financial collapse of our system. And this time, when the Secretary of the Treasury and the Federal Reserve go to the Congress to ask to be bailed out, there's not going to be any money to be bailed out. We'll all be out of Lancaster Boulevard with our cups. So I think it would behoove the council to have the department heads here next week, go over this budget, if they have to stay here to midnight, and come up with a new budget that faces the realities of our times and does not increase the taxes of the citizens. Thank you very much.
Michael, you are so depressing.
Okay, can I respond to him?
Yeah, go ahead.
Michael, that's our job. We represent the people. That's what we do, okay? The people come and they can ask us, they can do what, you know, they want with us, but these people have jobs to do. That's, they're, they're trying to maintain the city, okay? They call us when they, they need to know about something or they don't agree with something, and that's our job to do that. So if you have any questions, feel free to call me. I've told you that before. Thank you.
All right, and before you all descend into this pit of despair, we're going to do something good. We've got Dr. Marshall from the East Side School District, who's got a wonderful program.
Good afternoon. It's really a pleasure to be here to talk about some of the great things happening in the East Side Union School District, we're in the eastern portion of our great city, Lancaster. I want to talk about an initiative we've been piloting this year, the Parenting Academy, and it's sponsored by the High Desert Alliance of Black School Educators. And I'd like to call up at this time, the principal of Cole Middle School, where we're based on the project, Matt Pollak. The president of the High Desert Alliance of Black School Educators, Gwen Cole. And Mayor Emeritus Bishop Henry Hearns.
So we're going to talk to the folks and, Bishop, good to see you.
So we're going to give you an overview of the program.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, council members, Team Saints of Lancaster. My name's Matt Pollak and principal over at Cole Middle School, we're in the East Side out there on 30th East. As we go through the school year, we want to get more and more parents not just involved with what we're doing, but engaged with their students' education. And we're looking at some things we need to improve upon. We tapped into Mrs. Cole and High Dapsy to help us get parents engaged with the students' education. And we started late in the year, we started spring, we did a nine-week program, and here's a brief overview of the, of the nine weeks. The first week, we have, they do an orientation with the parents, bring them to our school library, talk about leadership, parental leadership, and why parental involvement matters, especially with middle school students who tend to stray a little bit. The next few weeks, we talk about we're going into state testing, talked about state testing, why it was important, and the role of parents before, during the after-testing, parent notifications about instruction intervention, parental rights. The third week, when they went into the benefits of parental involvement, and how to work with their children, becoming an involved and engaged parent. The first week, which had been the end of April, early May, parent teacher communication, which was big, building that bridge between the home and the school, becoming effective partners with your child's school. Conflict resolution was next on the dockets. Parent advocacy, which is big, parents need to be there for their children all the way, and all the people have been in my office saying how important that is. How they can support their children, how to be effective parent advocates, and how to introduce themselves to school officials so we can have effective communication for the betterment of their kids. The eighth week, how we speak with the children about dating and other things, bullying. And the ninth week, school board attendance. We wore acknowledgement for parents, parental support groups, testimonies and demonstrations, and they did come out in force to a school board meeting, I believe it was about three, four weeks ago.
Yes.
And there were a number of parents who, it was a very large crowd that night, and came up and spoke to everyone. So that's a quick overview of what we've done this last spring, the last nine, 10 weeks. The school, I'll introduce Mrs. Gwen Cole right now.
I'm, I'm not going to be long, but I, I just want to say, these parents have made me proud because they believe in being better and being more engaged. If the students can please stand up, all the students that came today, can you please stand so everyone can see who you are? Please give them a hand. All right.
Make sure you do the names.
And the second, can I have my parents stand up, please? All my parents that came, many could not, but they're here. The other thing is, I want my husband, please, if you can stand, because when we can't do something, he always kicks in. He has taken them to the baseball games, he has mentored them. He's the love of my life, if I can say that. The chocolate in my coffee. I don't drink coffee. I know. Chocolate in my hot chocolate. Okay, so, I'm just very proud of them, and I do, and I do want to say that this is the first time that some of these parents have ever been to a city council meeting, and they may be a little nervous, so please forgive their faces. I'm a little nervous too, but they also, when they went to the board meeting, that was the first time they had gone to a school board meeting, and we're going to be doing more of this. So we're just very proud. Mayor, we are making some changes. They're engaged, they got a parent commitment that they wrote, and a policy of how they will be engaged in the next school year on attending the schools, meeting the parent, I mean their teachers, and also following their students and checking backpacks, right? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you take one more with my husband?
Wasn't going to let you out, was she?
Okay, we're going to have Mayor Hearns read off the names and give the presentations. Before we do, you know, what we're starting to see is we're, we're starting to see things just like this, where people are recognizing that if we're going to, if we're going to improve our, our well-being of this community, we've got to do it by ourselves, on our own, without somebody, Santa Claus ain't coming to help us. You know? And, and in many respects, I think this economic downturn that we've experienced is going to be a blessing because of the things like this that I'm seeing, and we didn't see that before, and I, I just have so much hope for this community because of that. And I, I thank you so much for pulling this together. I mean, you just created this idea, made it happen. I mean, that is, that is truly remarkable. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and the council, and all of you for allowing this to happen, and I want to say to you, Mr. Mayor, there's no question in my mind that, because again, preacher coming out of me here a second, and that is, the Bible teaches us that all things work together for good, for those who love God and are called according to His purpose. And as far as I'm concerned, whoever wants to say whatever they want to say, but I know the guy here way before he was in the politics, and I know that his heart is for this community and for this city, not only for this city, but for this community. And I want you and the council to know that we truly, truly appreciate you. Also to say in my last words before you hand out the certificate, and that is to Dr. Marshall and to East Side School, we thank you guys for really making this all happen, because this gets people involved. Some I've never met, I haven't seen the mayor, and I've been here for all my life almost, and some of you we've not met. So I just want to say to you, again, thank you for the privilege, and thank you all for being here.
And there's not a horn up here. Okay, we're going to give them their certificates. Do you want Ma to come up?
Want to come up as we call you, me? April Addison? Why don't we, why don't you just call the names in a hurry, and then they can just come on?
Yeah, because I know who's here.
April, thank you.
Thank you, April. Let's go over here, we got a picture.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to have Taiwan Bailey come up on behalf of his mother, Latonya Bailey. Come on, Taiwan.
Thank you.
She never... Savannah Barnett.
Come on, buddy. Yeah, I'm going to take a picture with you.
Hey, I like that suit.
Amanda Keenan.
Thank you.
Oh, she's not here, can I go?
Thank you.
Amanda, where are you? Amanda, thank you so very much.
Patty Mitchell's not here.
I'm scared.
Dorothy Page. Dorothy Page, Princess Pitchford. And this is Mama Jones. I call her Mama Jones, but Mrs. Jones.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Hey, let's get a picture. Okay, how are you?
This is who?
Mama Jones.
Mama Jones, I hear. I know who you are.
Yeah, I know.
All right, let's get a picture. Okay.
Can I get one with the mayor? That's it.
Absolutely.
Come on. Bishop, you too.
We're going to get a picture of everybody.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Come here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Come on, kids.
Come on. Little Jackson, y'all.
Okay, if you're going to, if you're going to be in the picture, you got to get up in the front.
And I do, so she, Ms. Linda Jones wanted to be here, she had a death in her family, but she is the founder of the High Desert Alliance of Black School Educators.
She's on the west side, isn't she? Okay, come here, sweetheart. Okay, come on, you got to get up in front. Come on. Okay, you ready? Okay, let me get over here. Okay. You're going to miss the shot. Look at that. Come here, let me, let me take you up.
Yeah.
All right. You got to watch, watch. Hey, camera, look at the camera.
One, two. One, seven. Just in a little more.
He's not going to put up with this much longer.
One, two, three.
Okay, that good, thank you so much. And Dr. Marshall, we have one for you.
I know that this has been a very tough year with redevelopment agency, all those changes, and the budget definitely affects the housing authority as well, so I'd like to thank Barbara and your staff, and Mark for doing a great job on the budget.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to PH 2, something tells me I'm not gonna like any of this, is that right? We're not gonna like any of this, what do you have to say? Well, we're gonna like it. Well, this isn't about paying more money. See why we pray?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The resolution that you have before you will levy our sewer system service charges at $78 per service unit. Service unit is what we charge a single-family residence. $78 per sewage unit is the same charge the City Council adopted at the transfer of the district from the county to the city. It has, back in April of 2007, there has, has never been an increase in sewer, sewer fee thus far. We use the money to maintain 425 miles of sewer line, we flush every year 70 to 80 miles of that line, we conduct inspections in restaurants, looking at fats, oils, and greases that plug up our sewer system, we respond to sanitary sewer overflows each year roughly about 10. We try to really do most of our work as preventive maintenance, in fact, our statistics show that 87% of our work is preventive maintenance. Roughly $10 of the 78 that's collected goes for sewer replacement, so that we're able to, to deal with emergencies in the future. So, that concludes my staff report, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Any speaker cards? Michael Reeves.
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. When we first turned over the sewer to the city from the county, I heard some rather disturbing news that our rates would go up to be $300 per sewage unit. And I'm happy to see that there will not be an increase, and it never materialized to be $300 a unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt PH 2.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Unanimous, moving on. Oh, we have the committee assignments. And this is going to be truly an example of no Brown Act violation, because I haven't talked to any of you about it. So let's see where it takes us. AB Air Quality, you guys happy?
Yes.
Anybody else wanna be on it? Then let's leave it alone. AB Transit?
Happy.
Yep, making fine, fine progress.
Have you found the money they took yet?
Not uncovered at all.
Close?
Close.
We're gonna get a report?
Close.
Why is everybody looking all nervous and embarrassed?
Not.
No, it's, it's, it's close. Not supposed to talk about it yet.
Yeah, if it wasn't for the litigation, I think we would be.
Now you know how I am with that stuff. I've been talking about it. Alright, let us know as soon as you can.
Thank you.
Sanitation district. I hear that the Vice Mayor wants to abandon his position on the sanitation district and send it back to me right before the rate increase. Is that true?
Absolutely. And I did my two years on it, so I'm ready to move to another.
Here are two years of, of, I mean, great effort, don't get me wrong, I thought you did a magnificent job. You're fully educated on the process now, you fully understand the sanitation district, and just because there's going to be a major rate increase, you want me to take it over?
I'll still vote no for it.
Still have my vote. And actually, I think that's appropriate, I'll take it over. I'll start attending, but who's gonna be my alternate?
I can be the alternate.
Okay, you got it. North County Transportation? We currently have Councilman Mann on it.
That's fine.
And we have a vacant spot, right? Who wants it?
I'll bet.
Okay, you sure? You're doing a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I'll bet.
Okay, Cindy's not gonna be happy with me.
She not happy now.
Oh, she was one of those 24 percenters. Okay, alright, those are the appointments, do you wanna...
There's mine, Addison.
There's more. You know, for the folks that are interested, this council really does work. Most, most mayors attend all of this stuff, and they do it all, and the council just kinda coasts, and obviously, that's not what I'm doing, and I have no intention of doing it. This council has fully picked up all of the balls that are being juggled all the time, and personally, I find it to be, the experience of being mayor, not easy, but certainly doable, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you're not just talking heads up here, you actually work, and you work a lot. And it's all that stuff nobody ever sees, nobody gives you credit for, but the hours you guys put in is enormous. High Desert Corridor?
I'll stay on there unless somebody else wants to be on it, it doesn't meet that often.
And we have one person who's vacant, is that right?
We need an alternate.
Okay. Put it on the website, I'll take applications, who wants to be the alternate on that, doesn't have to be an elected official, okay? Southern California Association of Governments?
If you want me to take hats and some off the other one, I could do that for you.
That'd be good, because I've never gone. Just a bunch of people talk and waste time, and you know, have meetings, I mean. Well, seriously, has anybody ever seen them accomplish anything yet?
Okay.
Go make them accomplish something, would you?
They wanna take over our housing.
Okay, League of California Cities?
I used to be the alternate, I don't know if I am, if...
You're gonna be leaving in November?
I hope so.
Oh, how's that coming, by the way?
Last count today.
You're still running?
Oh yeah, I'm still in first place.
Okay, is the second change at all?
No.
Okay. Yeah, you'll be leaving in November. So, what do you want to do? Anybody else want that?
Yep. It's the desert, it's just so, those are the...
Nobody's rushing to fill the board yet.
Desert Mountain, they meet in different cities quarterly, so one time it might be in Big Bear, another time it might be in Mammoth, another time it might be in Forest.
Never.
I've heard the desert not do that.
You wanna do it? Good. Yeah, I mean, they're actually a good time. The, I mean, and they have a lot of education stuff happening at those things. Alright, Edwards Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board. Mr. Chris is the alternate, Jocelyn Swain is the, we have a staff member on it, right? Okay, let's just leave that alone, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, Convention and Visitors Bureau. Currently, Mr. Smith is on that, do you want that?
I can take that.
Okay. The, that's a big one. Should be a big one, alright, good.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
We need, on the League of California Cities, LA County Division as well.
See, see, these people just like to meet. Okay, who wants the LA County Division?
I'll do that also.
Okay, great. Tell them I wish I could be there, but...
But you hate meetings.
And I had to go to the gym, so... Okay, do we need to, can I just appoint them, or do we have to vote?
Some of them require council approval, so I guess I would take those as your nominations.
Those are my nominations for all of the different commissions, committees, and...
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, new business, cite them on. Any speaker cards?
Michael Reeves.
Okay. Wendy, who's doing that, you know who?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and authority members. I'm having the pleasure this evening to bring to you this report on the Cool Center. This is the second year in a row that we've been successful in our grant application with SCE to obtain funds to run the Cool Center. Last year, it was at the Soccer Center out on the east side, a wonderful facility, but this year, we decided to bring it to the center of town and have it at Moa. So it's in the classroom at Moa, the Hernando and Fran Marquee, I didn't say that right, I apologize, classroom, and it offers an opportunity for our residents to come and enjoy our air conditioning on Edison's Bill, and there's plenty of activities there. We've got a Wii, we've got cards, we've got puzzles, we've got games for the kids, we've got arts and crafts for the kids, and we've got refreshments as well. So it's a great opportunity for people to shut off their electricity, or their air conditioning at home, and come in and enjoy Edison's Bill at the Cool Center. So with this, if you approve this this evening, we will be able to continue to operate the Cool Center Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to Fri-, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Do we still have the deal with the Cinemark? If it hits 100 degrees, they open up, or...
Actually, we don't this year, what they do have...
Those bums, let's boycott Cinemark.
What they do offer is, they do already have discounts for seniors at the Movies 12. So I believe it's a dollar there for them.
A dollar?
Yeah.
And it kicks in when it hits 100 degrees?
Actually, it's just all the time.
So, they didn't do anything, right?
Well, they did advertise it.
They got free advertising.
They just started that discount price though, didn't they?
Yes, I believe it was last year, I'm not sure how long.
Okay, thank you. Well, Mr. Reeves, clearly, you can't be opposed to having an air conditioning place for old, sick people when it hits 120 degrees when they're sweltering at home dying. Surely, you can't, you can't oppose that.
Uh, Mayor, Council, Staff, and Board of Directors. Last summer, or the summer before, I was coming down from the Senior Citizens Center to City Hall, and I walked into City Hall, and I think City Hall is the coolest building, I don't mean hip, I mean, it's the coolest, it's the coolest building in town, and I don't see why we can't use City Hall as a cool center. I mean, we can open up the so-called emergencies room from the parking lot and allow people to come in and stay there, or they could come down here and stay. I mean, the air conditioning's on, it's the coolest place I've ever been into, and it's just a shame that maybe the seniors couldn't, could come down here and use the City Hall at no cost to the city.
Michael, when people are hot, they get depressed. Do you know how depressing it would be to look at me for more than an hour?
Yeah.
I mean, ask my wife.
Michael...
Thank you for your...
Michael, thank you for bringing that up, and it is a cool, hip building also, I have to say, but to be able to give the air conditioning to people that can't afford during the hot season, it's really nice for them to also be entertained at the same time, and have something to do, especially with children. And the Moa is just amazing, I was honored to be there when we made the announcement, and they just have so many things to do there with crafts, reading, arts, music, singing. It's just amazing how the children can be entertained at the same time while they're being cooled. If they were here, they would just be sitting here, and as our mayor said, we would just be staring at pictures all day. But thank you for bringing that up, but I also think it helps when they're entertained at the same time.
Well, if we see somebody in the City Hall, you know, I mean, if a citizen comes in and sits down, you know, don't have security, kick them out, because I mean it, it's really pleasant here in the summer, you know, I mean, as an individual. You might find me down there, so I don't wanna be kicked out. Thank you.
We'll, we'll be sure not to do that, Michael. Thank you. Alright, so a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Tell the kids they don't have to come to City Hall.
They could be entertained at the same time. Things are looking up.
Okay, we're now going to recess to close session. Oh no, we got all this other stuff, hold on. No action on the Financing Authority, no action on the Power Authority, no action on the Successor Agency, what's this for? Okay, go ahead and tell them to keep the film running on the public comment for the non-adjourned items, would somebody do that? Let's put it back on and see how it works. If the nut jobs come back and start insulting people, we'll turn it off again, but let's see how it works, alright. Guess I shouldn't have said that, huh? Oh well.
No, but I do wanna say thank you for doing that, that's a great move.
Yes, thank you, I think that was the right thing to do.
Well, let's see how it works.
Sure, sure.
Alright, good. City Manager, any announcements?
Actually, three. City Hall may not be the coolest place, but I had the opportunity to visit our dog park at Hall Park. We have a new dog that is a social one, unlike the other one. Anyone who hasn't been to the dog park, you're missing something, so I would invite the citizens to come to the dog park at Hall Park, and really is an amazing, amazing place. Speaking of dogs, on my bike ride, I got up close and personal with two pit bulls. Could we talk to Animal Control and remind them that pit bulls are public enemy number one? Absolutely, thank you. The second announcement I have is, I wanna commend Brenda and Shannon Dow. They've been working very hard with the Tourism Bureau to work with the hotels, and now in every hotel is a tabletop in the hotel rooms that shows the schedule for the Beeline, which goes to different areas of the city, the boulevard, and each hotel has a list of all of the menus in different places of the, in the city, that the people at the front desk can go through, show people what restaurants to go to, what the menus are, et cetera.
Can we put it available to local businesses?
Absolutely.
I mean, my office would use that extensively.
Absolutely.
Can we put it online?
Yeah, if it's not online, we can, I thought it was online, but we will too.
And our staff...
And they just have so many things to do there with, um, crafts, reading, um, arts, music, singing. It's just amazing how the children can be entertained at the same time while they're being cooled. If they were here, they would just be sitting here. And as our mayor said, we would just be staring at pictures all day. Um, but thank you for bringing that up, but I also think it helps when they're entertained at the same time.
Well, if we see somebody in the City Hall, you know, I mean, if a citizen comes in and sits down, you know, don't have security, kick them out, because I mean it, it's really pleasant here in the summer, you know? I mean, as an individual. You might find me down there, so I don't want to be kicked out. But thank you.
We'll, we'll be sure not to do that, Michael. Thank you. All right, so motion?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Let's vote. Tell the kids they don't have to come to City Hall.
They could be entertained at the same time. Things are looking up.
Okay, we're now going to recess to close session. Oh, no, we got all this other stuff. Hold on. No action on the Financing Authority, no action on the Power Authority, no action on the Successor Agency. Uh, what's this for? Okay, go ahead and tell them to keep the film running on the public comment for the non-adjourned items. Would somebody do that? Uh, let's put it back on and see how it works. If, uh, the nut jobs come back and start, uh, insulting people, we'll turn it off again. But let's see how it works. All right. Guess I shouldn't have said that, huh? Oh, well.
No, but I do want to say thank you for doing that. That's
Yes, relax. Thank you. I think that was a great thing to do.
Well, let's see how it works.
Sure. Sure.
All right, good. City Manager, any announcements?
Actually, three. City Hall may not be the coolest place, but I had the opportunity to visit our dog park at Hall Park. We have a new dog that is a social one, unlike the other one. Anyone who hasn't been to the dog park, you're missing something, so I would invite the citizens to come to the dog park at Hall Park, and really is an amazing, amazing place. Um, speaking of dogs, on my bike ride, I got up close and personal with two pit bulls. Could we talk to Animal Control and remind them that pit bulls are public enemy number one? Absolutely. Thank you. Um, the second announcement I have is I want to commend Brenda and Shannon Dow. Uh, they've been working very hard with the Tourism Bureau to work with the hotels, and now in every hotel is a tabletop in the hotel rooms that shows the schedule for the Beeline, which goes to different areas of the city, the boulevard, and each hotel has a list of all of the menus and different places of the, uh, in the city that the people at the front desk can go through, show people what restaurants to go to, what the menus are, et cetera.
Can we put it available to local businesses?
Absolutely.
I mean, my office would use that extensively.
Absolutely.
Can we put it online?
Yeah, it, I, if it's not online, we can't. I thought it was online, but we will too.
And our students would enjoy that too at the university.
Was that a Generation X remark, or what?
Yes.
Yeah.
Also, what do you mean, give a, give a notebook?
Right.
Brenda? That's good, I liked it.
Brenda and Shannon might not be as excited about the shout-out again now that they have more work, but will. It really is a good thing, and it's helped a lot. More people We have a nice website, too, that we developed over the past couple of years, so it's for the Visitors Bureau. Think it is on the Tourism website, but we'll make sure.
Wonderful.
It is, Calvin just confirmed it.
Okay, City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any item that is not on the agenda. You may fill out a speaker card, you'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the City Council, the City Manager, and City Staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds remaining, and the yellow light, I mean, the red light comes on when your three minutes are up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Okay, Joe Camacho?
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, council members and authority members. My name is Joe Camacho, and I'm telling you, asking you not to support Senate Bill 956, Assembly Bill 1447, and Assembly Bill 1534. These are three bills pending in the California State Legislature that will collectively deny thousands of Californians with less than perfect credit the opportunity to own a car and place undue financial burden on California state, county, and municipal governments. Many of the buy here, pay here units that are part of the nine thousand businesses in California selling pre-owned vehicles will have to stop lending to customers with less than perfect credit when the government imposes additional risk and costs. Basically, folks, in a nutshell, it's going to severely handicap our ability to be able to sell vehicles to people with challenged credit. I want to tell you about the typical Camacho customer, um, Mr. Smith, no relation to the Vice Mayor. Has two to three repos, a bankruptcy, and piles of medical bills. Mr. Smith. Car broke down last night, and he's going to work tomorrow. He went to, he went to every new car dealer in the AV and got turned down. Finally came to Camacho, and we said yes. Why? Because we specialize in people with challenged credit, okay? And that's what my father first started the business back in nineteen eighty, and what he's taught us to do, and with our business plan, is to focus on these types of folks. Um, many of us cannot relate to this customer because we have not been in their shoes. They may live paycheck to paycheck and have made decisions in their lives that's created credit challenges, previous repos, unpaid medical bills, unpaid child support, but they are good people that need help. We help these people every single day, and we help them get them back on their feet. Uh, we guide them to making good habits and re-establishing their credit by selling them a vehicle, reporting to the credit agency, and helping to rebuild themselves from the ground. Thirty percent of these super risky customers will not pay us, and we understand that, but seventy percent will. Some of these will end up buying new cars from our new car dealerships in town, and we start to rebuild themselves. And some of these customers will end up as a future homeowners, but they can't move up this ladder and reach your dreams without someone that is willing to take their risks the first time. And I ask you folks, how many of you folks would dip into your own personal savings account and lend this Mr. Smith ten thousand dollars so he can get to work tomorrow in a car? Well, folks, we do this three or four times per day. And these Senate bills that you guys will have in front of you severely limits our ability to be able to sell to these folks. I'm there. Um, this legislation will not allow us to say yes to Mr. Smith, so the next morning, uh, when Mr. Smith cannot get a ride to work, I want you to ask Mr. Smith if he would vote for this legislation, or would he vote for a ride to get to work? That's it. Thank you.
You know, I got a story to tell about Camacho. Look, no. Twenty-five years ago, uh, I was talking to one of the car dealers, you know, the new car dealers, and he was talking about your dad. And he was saying, you know, at the end of the day, the reason they're successful is they make certain those cars work. And the entire course of the loan, they make certain those cars run. And, and you build an incredible, successful business model on making certain you sell them a product that works. And, uh, I've always remembered that conversation, and I've watched you guys grow and grow and grow. You, you really are a little success story.
Yeah, we've actually sold forty-four thousand cars to the people of Antelope Valley since the day we opened. And over half of those people are those people with the challenged credit. And, uh, we want to sell another forty-four thousand people to people with challenged credit in the future, so I just ask you guys to take a look at it, and, and take a good look at it, and, and give us a fair shot.
Mr. Camacho, what are those numbers again?
Forty-four thousand.
You're stopping?
No, I am. Oh, uh, forty, forty-four thousand vehicles since it
No, 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 what are the numbers of the bills?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is Senate Bill 956, Assembly Bill 1447, and Assembly Bill 1534.
And haven't these bills already been voted on? Um, have they been voted on?
Their own house, they have not gone to the other house yet. They have Mayor Paris, can't we take a decision on that?
Yeah, as soon as the staff gives us a breakdown on the bills, what, what we can't do is just take it from the floor.
Got it.
I mean, you know, I mean, I've been at the Camachos twenty-five years, I'm sure what you're saying is accurate, but
Absolutely.
Until I, until I actually read it, I'd be irresponsible.
Right.
So if we want to put it on a calendar for next week, next meeting, that's still enough time, isn't it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, let's do that.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grooms?
Thank you, Mayor Paris, members of the council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Larry Grooms, resident of Lancaster for twenty-five years, and appealing here as a representative this evening for the Coalition to Protect Our Drive, uh, Freedom to Drive. Uh, Mr. Camacho tells you about the depressing impact these bills would have on used car dealers, their customers, their employees, and their vendors. We're talking about job losses. Uh, I want to use my three minutes to address the consequences of that, uh, loss of business on the general fund budget for the city of Lancaster and for cities all over California. For the past calendar year, we understand the city of Lancaster received just over six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in, uh, sales tax, uh, revenue directly from used car sales. Statewide, the people who sell cars that, uh, generate that, uh, revenue project a drop in sales tax in the range between two hundred and thirty-four million dollars and three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. To put that into perspective, for calendar 2011, the State Board of Equalization reported used car sales tax receipts of four hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. The three bills together will bring about disastrous results for both state and local revenues, and these bills are being rushed through the legislature on a mostly party line vote. All three have cleared their houses of origin and are now being considered in the last phases of the process in the opposite house. This is not a partisan issue. If these bills are allowed to pass, the pain will be suffered by, in every city and county that relies on sales taxes for the general fund budgets that support police and fire protection. And that loss doesn't include a corresponding drop in vehicle license fee revenue and, uh, registration fee revenue. This is the first, this isn't the first time the state of California has tried to rewrite an entire industry business plan, uh, in the name of consumer protection, and with dismal and counterproductive results always. Most Californians probably remember, uh, the unintended and unforeseen consequences of electricity deregulation. Do we all remember that? The clock is ticking, there's little time. I apologize for the unconventional approach to, to this very serious problem, but the clock is ticking so fast, we don't have a lot of time. So we're going to councils all over the state with the same message in the hopes that you, as individuals, or, uh, which, uh, will join our coalition of opposing these bills, and hopefully we'll get a resolution, uh, down the road that will be heard in Sacramento. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Maria Pisanu?
Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
So many issues. Um, usually by the time I get up here, I'm always so emotional from everything that I've, you know, listened to and everything we've been through for the past four or five years or longer. But, um, I'm up here because I feel that there's some serious issues that, um, I think need to be addressed, um, and that people do have rights to be concerned about. Um, the main ones today, I've, I've been here before to talk to you about things, and you know, it's, it's, I've wanted to come in and talk to you about other issues, but it's hard to do that all the time when you're busy doing things like trying to, you know, work, put food on the table, make sure your kids are safe, things like that. But, um, my concern is some of the, um, with the alternative energy, how it's affected, um, our health, our land in the past and in the future, and how it's affected people we love and care about. Um, you talked about how it's a, we have the highest mortality rate here, and how there's an underlying here in the city, um, in this valley, which a lot of people have lived here for a long time know that this area is an area of, of serious contamination, it has been for, you know, quite some time. Um, it's also a weapons testing site, um, and it's caused a lot of problems. I think that, um, some of these, uh, alternative energy sources need to be checked into a little more, and, um, those people in the know need to, like, maybe consider what it can do to us health-wise. Um, and that's just something that I really wanted to bring up. There's other issues, too, that I'd like to discuss involving housing, jobs, and education, which maybe I could speak to you guys about at another time, but I am very concerned, though, about all these, you know, the, um, alternat-, alternative energy sources that we have and that are happening here in this valley.
You're talking about the gas plant, right?
Well, many things, like the Water Reclamation and Treatment Center, the garbage recycling that they're going to do, the solar and water heating, just the, the things that affect it. Also, I hear on Avenue I, it's supposed to be a power plant, but they said they're building a hospital there. Is that true?
No, you're thinking of Avenue L.
No, Avenue I, I believe. Um, but I know there was a report down on about how it can affect, you know, kids and stuff in that area. I don't know if it's, you know, hospital, if it's something to do with radioactivity or anything like that.
Yeah, the macium on Avenue I. The macium, yeah, but I, I don't, I mean, the only, the only thing we'd be doing is, uh, the solar panels around it.
Well, I don't know. I know they're building over there, and I just heard that maybe it was a hospital and had something to do with, you know, there was already a report down there, I believe, that how it was going to affect the children in that area and things like that.
I'm not aware of any health effects of the, you, the, uh, PV, is there?
No, not that, not that we're aware of, and the issues come up over and over again. We haven't seen a study on it.
You know, the, the thing people have to recognize is we are going to have square miles of solar panels, square miles. We are going to power the, the, uh, the southwestern United States. Uh, there's, I mean, and it, it's a goal of mine to see that happen. Uh, it's also a goal of mine to see us get a piece of the profits from that, so that we aren't relying on profit taxes.
But there's some things that are more important than the profits, and the business end of it, you know, it's people's healths and people's lives that are at stake.
Well, as soon, if somebody were to give me one study that would indicate that, uh, PV is harmful to anything, uh, I would, I would look at it, but so far, that hasn't been the case. Uh, but I don't, you know, I don't want any, there to be any mistake. Lancaster is going to be the solar capital of the world.
Right. And now at one time it was supposed to be the import, export capital of the world, and now it's the alternative energy.
Well, you can make cracks all you want, but the fact of the matter is, is that we are winning the race. Right now, we produce more of our energy from the sun than any city in the world. Uh, we're extremely proud of that, and I think most of the voters are, too. Uh, anyway, but thank you for your
They still don't know some of the things that are going on, so maybe that's why they're in support.
But there's, there's a huge difference between gas plants and, and PV, and a huge difference between wind and PV. I mean, it, you can't just clump it all together. It, it makes no sense to do that. It's nonsensical. You know, they're different. Uh, and then, I don't know about you, but I kind of like the lights being on, and it seems like PV seems to be the safest way to do that. Uh, thank you, though. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, Michael Reeves, you thought, I forgot about you, didn't you?
Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. At the last Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion about the, um, drawing up of homes, how we were going to draw them up, how much space we're going to leave, are they going to be able to have, uh, units attached to them for elderly people. Before we emphasize the future, I think we ought to consider the current situation in our neighborhoods. If you've driven to Lancaster, you'll see nice neighborhoods, and all of a sudden you see where somebody's put up a chain-linked fence. And this doesn't have to do with any race, any ethnic group, or anything. I've seen it done by all groups of people, and it ruins the integrity of the neighborhood. There ought to be some ordinance by this city. I know there's an ordinance on how high you can have the set, the fence up, but there ought to be some ordinance that we can prevent the wholesale destruction of neighborhoods. I've seen it done in northeast Los Angeles. You can see it's been done in the San Fernando Valley. One person puts up a fence, and then the next person, and beside, after, they all get the fences up, it looks like a slum. You know, we have a capacity to stop that and preserve our neighborhoods. Um, my aunt lives in Long Beach, Lakewood area, and the houses are no older than the house that I live in, but the, the neighborhood is immaculate because no one has put up fences in the neighborhood. They maintain their yards, they kept up their homes, and the value of the houses is like $300,000 to $400,000 even in the downturn. Now, if things turn around...
Michael, I don't disagree with you, but I think you would be better served talking to the Architectural and Design Commission, because we're not going to do anything without their advice and concurrence. Uh, I mean, I guess we could, would it be a rare day? But we have a commission designed specifically for the thing you're talking about, and you should talk to them. I mean, they're, they're all good folks who, whose desire is exactly what you're talking about, is to improve the overall appearance of the city. And I don't know that you're wrong. I, I think that you, you actually have brought up a good point, but I think it's wasted here. I think you should be talking to them, because they're the ones in power, Dan. Okay?
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go talk about all the people suing us and what we're going to do with that.
Mr. Mayor, in addition, we also have a, uh, employment matter, um, labor negotiation matter that we'll be going into closed session on, plus the items, the litigation items listed on the agenda.
I assume that the staff wants to decrease their salary and...
(laughing).
No. Okay. (inaudible). I'm going to recess.
(inaudible).
Right. Correct.
Okay. I'm calling the meeting back in order. Uh, Mr. McEwen, could you give us any announcements in the closed session, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. The, uh, City Council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54957.6 concerning labor negotiations, gave direction to negotiators concerning those negotiations. Uh, they also met under Government Code Section 54956.9A concerning the, uh, Community Action League versus Lancaster, um, the NAACP versus Lancaster, the Mongols, um, National Motorcycle Club, the Miracle Star Women's Recovery Community, Antelope Valley Allied Arts, and Ruben versus Lancaster, and gave direction to, um, the city attorney concerning each of those cases. No other action was taken in closed session.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McEwen. Housing Authority Chairman Zado?
The Housing Authority...
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, there, there was one other, uh, matter that I, I forgot that the, uh, number two on the, on the list of, uh, closed sessions, the Conference with Legal Counsel concerning, uh, initiation of litigation, um, again, gave direction to the city attorney concerning that matter. We'll be bringing something else back in the future. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Zado?[1776.83]